Good morning, we'll start the regular session of the Board of Supervisors meeting for March 11th. Michelle Walter, roll call please.
Brandt.
Here.
Kurtenbach.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Hall.
Here. Take a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a motion for the agenda as proposed, we're met it, so move. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who say the same, motion stays. Item two, this is public comments, this is for any item that is not on today's agenda. Audience online. Seeing none, you do not have a proclamation. Item four, claims and payments, there's a resolution to approve the amended approved expenditures from March 4th, 2025 minutes, including an additional amount of $124.09 and that the county audit will be authorized and direct to issue payments. So move.
Second.
Motion is second, this is a resolution.
Schwartz?
Uh, yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Kurtenbach?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes. Item 4B, this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors, approve expenditures and that the county audit will be authorized and direct to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims out loud. So move.
Second.
Good morning Board, our total bill payment today is $361,417.07. And the sixty forty fund, we're paying $2,805.31. We don't have too many significant things today, we are paying for the vehicles, the three Trailblazers purchased for the health department. That amount is $81,222. And we are also paying for the hydro seeder for the road biologist, that is $83,735. Everything appears to be in order, does she have questions?
Alright, roll call please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Kurtenbach?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Yes.
Hall?
Yes. Item five, receive project updates from department heads.
Good morning Board, Kathy Nicholas, engineer. I wanted to provide a brief roads update this morning, our gravel roads are in pretty good condition, some of the heavily traveled gravel roads are starting to exhibit quite a few puddles. This is very normal for spring like conditions, our motor operators, our blades are out there now. They are starting to blade the gravel roads, we are starting to place spot racks, that's what we normally do on soft spots in the gravel road. It's still too early to say that all the frost is out of the ground from the gravel road system. Probably if we get some good rains, that will just take a few more weeks. So right now, I can't say how the frost oil situation is going to be, but so far so good, we are out there blading now. Can I ask any questions?
Are the areas that we've done the experimental drainage tile holding up?
Those are holding up good, there does not seem to be an abundance of frost oils.
Might there be other spots we consider it for or?
At this point, I don't know, we haven't budgeted to do any more of that right now. Fortunately, our winters haven't been that bad over the last three to four years since we've done that treatment. We did eliminate some of those bad spots by painting burned the roads, so of course we do have some areas that have frost balls remaining. Historically have had frost oils around the county, so we will consider that in the future, but right now, we're not planning on doing any more of that right now.
Thank you.
Good morning Board, Tim Jamison, real estate tax manager for the auditor's office. Need to open up something here real quick. We're preparing to mail out this week, starting tomorrow actually, about 41,500 budget property tax statements. It's the second year we've had to mail these out under House File 718. And last year, we got a lot of questions, so I just wanted to run through one real quick, just so you know what you're looking at and hopefully if anybody in the public's watching, we can eliminate some of those questions we got last year. The notice itself is a single page, front and back letter, they're sent to anyone receiving a property tax statement. We are excluding owners of tax exempt properties, so local governments, some churches won't give copy of the mailing. If you do have properties in more than one tax district, you'll get a notice for each tax district. If you have several properties, but they're all in one property tax district, you should just get one notice because these aren't property specific. Each district has its own notice. And I will run through one real quick here. So the top of the statement, I wanted to just point out, it'll list your tax district. This one is the Waterloo Rath area TIF amendment one area. I picked a Waterloo statement because these are the most, these will be the largest batch of these that go out, Waterloo schools, Waterloo city. Also wanted to point out, it notes that this is not a tax bill. That was a question I got a lot last year, people thought they had to send us money, it's not a tax bill. It doesn't require you to do anything, it's strictly informational, but it does give you information about where to go if you want to go to the public hearings for the city, county, and school district. It also doesn't include information for the smaller taxing authorities, community college, agricultural ag extension service, the assessor's office, townships. Those aren't included on the statement. So the first thing you'll notice, like for the schools, the county, and the city, it'll give you information about these upcoming hearings. And this is the Waterloo schools, gives you the date, time, and location of their hearing, a phone number for the school district, and a website if you want to go on and look at their budget information. Then it'll tell you currently they're collecting $39.3 million in taxes with a tax rate of 13.96. The effective tax rate is what the tax rate would need to be to generate 39.3 million. So how much would they have to lower their tax rate to get the same amount of tax dollars next year? And then after that is what they're proposing for property taxes in their preliminary budget, 50.7 million and a tax rate of 17.83. And then below that, it'll list, they're supposed to list any reasons for their, any increase in taxes. Below that's the county one, it's ostensibly the same as the cities, except you'll notice we have two tax rates listed, one for urban residents, one for rural residents. If you don't pay city taxes, if you live in the unincorporated area, that's the rate that would apply to you, the 9.41. Below that, then on the front, you'd find the city proposed taxes. In the city of Waterloo, there's a general non-ag, which is what most people pay. Agricultural property pays a much lower rate, which is why that's listed out separately, so a farm field in the city limits has a much smaller tax rate. If you live in the county or don't live in the city, this will be blank on your statement, you won't have any kind of city information down there. We're not hiding it from you, you just don't pay it. On the back, things get a little more interesting. At the top on the back, this will show you how the current property taxes collected in the Rath, in this case, the Rath area TIF amendment one, how those are distributed. So if you look, the Waterloo schools are currently getting 17% of the taxes collected there, the county's getting 5.7%. The city's getting 75% of the taxes collected there, and that's largely because this 819, like two thirds of that is in their TIF district. And then all others, which again is the community college, ag extension, the assessor's office, and a small state portion amount to 1.86% of that. And then below that, this is the part that I wish that they would do differently. This shows you hypothetically what a hundred thousand dollar house and a $300,000 business would pay in property taxes. What they're currently paying and what they would pay under the proposed rates that are from the city, county, and schools. The thing that makes it a little awkward is that they're comparing a hundred thousand dollar house this year to a hundred and ten thousand dollar house next year, and a $300,000 commercial property with a $330,000 commercial property. It's anticipating a 10% increase in assessed value. The vast majority of properties out there did not see an increase in assessed value for next year, so this won't necessarily be accurate. I did run the math, just for fun, to show what it would be if you left it at 100,000 and 300,000. And you can see those percentages are much lower than what you're going to see in the letter. Some might still be high, but they are much lower. I also wanted to point out, this is not specific again to your property, this is a hundred thousand dollar home and a $300,000 business, and it does not include the assessor, ag extension, any of those smaller taxing bodies. Also, at the end of the day, these rates could go lower after the budget hearings that you hold and the school board and the city holds, they can't go higher. So this would be the maximum amount you would see. And then lastly, at the bottom, there's just some boilerplate information. And I wanted to point out specifically this link that's on here to the Department of Management. They do have a calculator on there, where you can type in your assessed value and get a more accurate representation of what would happen to your taxes under the proposed budgets. And it also points out again that the final tax rates can change after budgets are adopted. So apologize for taking so much of your time this morning, I know you have a busy agenda, but anybody have any questions about this?
Can you go back just two slides, I wanted to write one more number down.
Well, I will tell you, I put a copy of yours, your statement, on the desk.
Yep.
Want to be going out to you?
That one, we would like to have a copy of.
Oh, this one?
He probably sent the presentation out anyway.
I can send it to him, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I appreciate that you did that.
And even though I gave you a copy of yours on your desk, you're still going to get one in the mail, we're not allowed by law. Deliver or send electronically, they have to be delivered by U.S. Postal Service, so don't shoot me for wasting a little bit of extra money on your mailing. We did contract with professional office services, and I approved the final statements this morning, so they should start hitting the mail tomorrow.
Just to, can you refresh us how much this unfunded mandate costs us?
Twenty-six thousand or twenty-seven thousand last year. We did have some postal rate increases this year, so I'm thinking it'll go up a little bit this year and then those beyond that. We did, our office did a lot of work to try to reduce the number of statements that go out, I won't bore you with the details on that, but we're sending out 41,500 letters. We have 72,000 real estate parcels, so you know, some of those are the tax exempt ones that we aren't sending out. People with multiple properties get squished down to one, and we did our best to make sure that people don't get two. I won't promise you that there won't be some that get through, somebody that's John Smith on one tax statement, John T. Smith on another tax statement. You might get two of the exact same thing in two separate mailings, but we did our best to avoid that. And professional office services is proving everything into one envelope, so we don't have to send multiple envelopes to the same person. So we did everything we could to reduce that cost, but yes, it is an unfunded mandate, so.
Thirty thousand is a nice round number to remember.
Pardon me?
Thirty thousand is a nice round number to remember for mailing this every year?
Yes. Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks Tim.
Alright, do we have any other department heads or elected officials?
Good morning Board, we're giving facilities director, just wanted to provide a quick update on the various projects that we have going on. As you know, we've got approximately six projects that are working at the same time. Just starting off from the top, the VA Center, everything's progressing pretty nicely over there. We did run into one snag, I think I maybe mentioned it earlier on. You'll be seeing a change order on this as well, but we did identify that the sewer line for that facility did need to be replaced. So we'll be working up that change order to be presented to you folks. That did set us back a little bit, but they are progressing. They're going to start doing rough ends for that facility right now. The expected completion is going to be right around June, mid-June possibly at the latest. So that's good news there. The courthouse remodel, auditor's department. The one thing that's going to bring me down is the 60 square foot of Terrazzo that we're still working on. We did receive the flake today, so we're being told, hopefully by the end of the week, that that will be complete, and that will essentially finish up the auditor's department. The treasurer's department's moving along nicely, if you get a chance, stop in and take a look at that. They do have all of the framing up, and they're starting to do sheet rocks, so it's really starting to come together. Still on track for that one, probably towards the end of May timeframe. IT server room, same thing, they're progressing well in there. Over at the jail, we have the kitchen and the HVAC upgrade. We did lose a little bit of time with the weather that we had here a week or so ago with the snow. We were hoping to get up on the roof at that time, but we're going to be getting back on track for that one as well. So no real surprises there that really to speak of. So keeping us busy, but we're fortunate ahead, so nothing else to really report there. With the clinic, the health department, we are going to be having conversations with HHS. We're hoping to get started on the first floor of the Pine Crest facility here, probably within the next couple of weeks, that's our goal. And again, working with HHS and the logistics behind how that's going to look, we're kind of doing that behind the scenes, so. Any questions on any of those? Okay, thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials? We'll move to item six, minutes approved for the March 4th meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who say the same, motion carries. We have two hearings this morning, hearing for rezone ordinance number 77-291 ALF properties, and then hearing at seven for rezone ordinance number 77-292, Philip Toma. Item eight is a consent agenda, we have a resolution to approve unless this item needs to be pulled separately.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, roll call please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Kurtenbach?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes. Item 9A, resolution to approve contract between Blackhawk County and Arca Search for the Board of Supervisor amended digitization project at an estimated cost of $33,251 with an annual hosting fee of $889, as recommended by Karen Scholwaltz, County Director. So move.
Second.
Motion is second.
Did you have any?
Do you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, unless you have any questions.
You talked about this earlier, I was comfortable with it.
With digitizing the four minute books?
Yep.
And the hosting fees at the 889, that's going to be as long as the contract runs?
Yeah, we got two bids and one, and Tim can speak more to it because he went through the process.
Sorry, when that came to you, your question?
I said the hosting, the annual hosting fee, I said that runs with the contract.
Yes.
Eighty-nine or just? Okay, it doesn't.
Right, right, I mean, that'll be ongoing, it's a one-time cost to scan and index the books, and then that, that'll be an ongoing fee for them to host the site. It'll be searchable by Word, which is the big thing that we wanted right now. The only way to find something in those books is if you know generally when it happened, which you don't always know. So now you can just type in a word, and it'll pull up all the pages with that word, it'd be easier to find things too, as well as preserving those books.
Tim, one other question, as long as we have this contract with them hosting that, if we decide to go to a different hosting site, do we have problems obtaining that information with it?
No, no, we have our own copy, they'll provide us our own copy of those if we ever need to put them on a different hosting site. Currently, Arca Search is hosting our auditor transfer books, which we scanned as part of an Arca project. This will just be adding the minutes books to that site. We've been very happy with how it's worked with the transfer books so far, so. But yes, they could move to another site. There'd be a little cost to do that changeover, and I don't know what that is, but it wouldn't be impossible to do.
Alright, this is a resolution, roll call please.
Brandt?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Kurtenbach?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes. Item 9B, resolution, amendment number one to the county substance abuse program, amending the contract by decreasing the budget in article that Roman numeral, by 3,512 and reducing the match to 19,344, be approved and directed, direct the chair to sign for saying.
So move.
Second.
Resolution?
I'm just trying to remember, is somebody reminding me why it's getting reduced?
Yes, so this was a grant award through the state that was offered only to boards of supervisors. We did subsequently kind of delegate handling it to the health department, but the grant is with the county board of supervisors. And it took a little while for, it only runs from July 1st through June 30th. And it took a little bit for them to get the grants out, and then it took a little bit for Pathways to get, that's who we subcontracted to, to get started with the program, so there just isn't a way for them to spend all the money by June 30th. And then we have been told that the program as it is today is ending June 30th, so there were no extensions or anything like that available. So that is why we're amending it to reduce both the grant and then the contract with Pathways will be the next action item.
Wild thought here, and maybe it's not doable, but would like Narcan purchase be doable?
That doesn't qualify as it is, this was strictly, the scope talks about prevention, so it was like education in schools and things like that for this particular grant.
I said, thank you.
Yep. Took really was a late start that we couldn't be avoided by, I mean, we did nothing.
Alright, it's a resolution, roll call please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Kurtenbach?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes. Item 9C, resolution that the amended agreement with Pathways Behavioral Services, Inc., to provide services, sorry, to provide substance abuse prevention education in schools, conduct screening, brief intervention, referral to treatment for 18 to 25 years in Blackhawk County, reducing the contract amount from $39,412 to $25,204 to be funded with opioid settlement funds, be approved and direct the chair to sign for saying. So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call please.
Kurtenbach?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes. Item D, 9D, resolution of the agreement to provide the loan funds to any amount of $94,800 to Fox Township to be used to purchase their share of a fire truck that will be jointly owned by several townships. Be approved and directed chair to sign as submitted by Michelle Weener, financial director. So move.
Second.
Okay, we were approached about a year ago, about more than a year ago by Barclay Township. They were the first to approach us about borrowing funds to pay for their share of a fire truck that's jointly owned by four townships. Only two are in Blackhawk County, go to our, I think, Cannon, or Benton, I don't know. And Fox at that time wasn't ready to borrow, but now they thought they would only have to borrow this spring. We expected the truck to be delivered about May 15th, and surprisingly, the truck arrived February 21st. So the truck is here, and so we are trying to speed this up a little bit for Fox Township. They really need to make the payment on the truck by March 21st. So if we could approve this today, we'll disperse the loan funds to them next week. And I believe there might be someone online from Fox, if you remember the name, if you have any questions for them.
Yeah, I'm here if you need any questions.
That was in the fall, when that was agreed upon last year, or was it late summer?
Well, it, so I don't remember the date we dated the Fox document or the Barclay documents. We did not, we have not pre-approved the document with Fox yet, this is the first document that we'll have with Fox.
When's the, so when do they start paying back on it?
I've scheduled the first payment for May of 2026, so we go just over a year. And they have requested a nine-year payment time, but they could prepay it if they have adequate funds, they can apply more to principal during that time, so that maybe it wouldn't have to take that long.
But that's a three and a half percent interest?
Three and a half percent is, that's what we agreed upon with Barclay. And we talked to our financial advisor a year ago, that's a reasonable amount for what we're paying, considering we don't have to pay all the fees to initiate a bond. Because that would be our other choice, we could issue bonds on their behalf, but these are small enough amounts and we have enough cash reserves that we're just doing it directly.
No question, but just happy to be a partner, dealing with this with these townships. I don't know if this would be a mic question, is there anything different in this loan agreement than we have with Barclay?
It is based on the same template, all of the terms are identical.
So we changed the year, you said the number of years was changed, remind me, but typically that. Yep, and I, Barclay is, had really requested semi-annual payment terms, we're just doing annual here to make it a little simpler for the township because that way they only have to deal with the check to us once a year.
This is the roll call, Michelle Walter, please.
Brandt?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Kurtenbach?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes. Item 10A, resolution to approve the addition of language to the Board of Supervisors' agenda. Blackhawk County strives to ensure that its programs and activities do not discriminate on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, age, or disability. Persons requiring assistance, auxiliary aids, or services, or accommodations because of a disability may contact the county's ADA coordinator at 319-833-3008, as recommended by Kathy Nicholas, Title 18 Board.
So move. Second.
Good morning Board, this came about from a review from the Iowa Department of Transportation. They conduct Title VI reviews about every five years on a five-year basis, so they come and check us to see if we're in compliance with the rules of Title VI. They did have a couple recommendations, one of the recommendations is that we put this language on the Board of Supervisors' agenda and of course, any other boards that are open to the public for the, to put this language on those agendas. So I asked your Title VI coordinator, I'm making that recommendation. Can I answer any questions about the Title VI program or this?
I'd like to see this language amended to include sexual orientation and gender identity. Those are two protected clauses missing from this. So. I'll make that amendment.
So you know why they recommended it?
So that, for example, if a person with hearing impairment, visual impairment, or just needing assistance to the courthouse wants to come to one of the board meetings or any other board meetings, that they could know that they should contact the Title VI coordinator for assistance to be able to participate in the meeting. It's really the emphasis here, just to know that meetings are open to everyone, and if you need assistance, to let us know.
Okay, I was just thinking, figured it'd be implied that we're not going to discriminate against people, but.
Yeah, that's what the Title VI program is.
Right.
We received, the Title VI program was created to the, I believe. We receive, the Title VI program was created to the, uh, I believe through the nineteen fifty-four Interstate Highway Act. So, of course, transportation agencies receive, uh, various forms of federal funding, who, of course, receive federal funding, so then we have to ensure that we are following the Title VI. So it often will, uh, realize on the county engineer to be the Title VI coordinator in the counties.
Okay.
Thank you, I will second supervisor sources, amendment.
Sexual orientation. This is, uh, do we have any other discussion, otherwise a roll call?
Leyland.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Brianne.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Ten B, motion to direct the finance director to advertise for a public hearing on the proposed Blackhawk County property tax levy for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, establishing the maximum property taxes for that fiscal year to be held on April first, twenty twenty-five, at nine AM, in Boardroom two oh one at Blackhawk County Courthouse, Watford, Iowa.
So.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Ten C, the motion that the travel request be approved and direct the chair to sign for saying, seven hundred and fifty dollars for registration, hotel stay, parking, and mileage for Justin Branch to attend the twenty twenty-five ISAC Spring Conference in Des Moines, Iowa, scheduled for March fifteenth through sixteenth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, the only thing, it's, uh, the third, it's this week, the thirteenth, Thursday, Friday.
Can you, the two nights you're going, though, you're going to a legislative reception the night before, or no?
No, I don't think, I'm going down Thursday morning, I think that's what was in the travel request, so just one night hotel.
So you stay for, just curious, so you stay Thursday and Friday night?
No, just Thursday night.
Can you repeat who did the motion in second for me?
I think, uh, I didn't say, yes.
Thank you.
That was the thirteenth and fourteenth, maybe the correct, uh, fourteenth. Yeah, fourteen, fifteen.
Sure you don't want to go to the legislative reception?
What's that?
Sure you don't want to go to the legislative reception?
You're willing.
Talk to me about that thirty thousand dollar.
Talk about that mailing.
Um. That's probably some other, what person stuff you even talking about? Ten D, motion to approve a survey, uh, designed to collect data on the usage of Blackhawk County website, allowing for insights into user experience, accessibility, and potential improvements, and to authorize its distribution to employees and general public as recommended by the website committee.
So moved.
Second.
Good morning, Board, Gabby Duett, Marketing Coordinator, representing the website committee, that includes Karen Schwalter, Lori Wurmers, Mic- Micah Knievel from Public Health, Amanda Thesemeyer, you, Davis, Clint Hardman, and Al Yu. And, uh, the reason we are doing this, we started meeting back in December, uh, I believe our contract with our current host is coming due at the beginning of the fiscal year, and, um, it's, a lot of municipalities use the current web host that we have, and it's fine, um, but it is pretty clunky on the backside for functionality and usability, and so we wanted to find out, and the survey will help us find out, is if it's just us as the people who are updating the website, or are there areas that the public and the staff also find clunky, or have some pain points in using, so that we're not just from the, those of us in the committee, not just using our perspectives, but the perspectives of both staff and the community. And so it's just two, uh, two ten-question surveys, one internal of how our staff use the website, and, um, how they use it in their job and what feedback they have, and then also a ten-question survey for the community, how often do they go to it, what are the pages they visit, um, what are the most important things they want from their website? And we hope to send that out, um, yet this week.
How long will that survey be?
Oh, that's a very good question, I would say probably about a week or two, yeah, we don't want to leave it open too long.
I thought it was the eighteenth.
What did you expect?
Was that eighteen, so eleven through the eighteenth is what we decided, okay, very good, thank you. Did you have another question for me?
Yes, I did, I said I did, but when she asked that question, I was like, alright, it's left, so.
Oh.
I was gonna say, um, as far as the users, like you said, you're looking to see if it's clunky from the internal side, kind of from.
Right, I mean, more so like, what is the user experience, um, are they able to find things? Because when you're the person that's updating the website, it, even though it takes maybe three or four clicks to get to something, you know where it is because you put it there, and so we want to know from both staff, who are, you would guess, more familiar with the website, and also the community, you know, what problems are they having with the website, what do we need to look at, so that we're not just so in our own silo that we don't, um, take that consideration.
Where will folks find the survey at?
Uh, we'll send it out on social media, and then we were also going to send it out to anybody who has subscribed to board meetings, um, that would be a good way to get ahold of them, and then, um, we'll have a, a link on the front page of the website.
It's not a clunky place to find it.
Yeah, right.
Do you have a targeted number or percentage of what you're looking for, for response, that will give you a good response rate? I'm, I'm just curious, what you're looking at for a targeted audience, and that, does that anybody?
I'm also curious, yeah, um, for staff, you know, it would be great if we get, you know, fifteen, twenty percent, I don't know if we would even get that. Um, and then externally, um, yeah, I don't know that we have a specific target, but we would like, you know, good participation if we can, but knowing that people are survey weary right now, um, and taking that into consideration.
So just kind of an additional element to your, what your group, what the group feels probably needs to be done or looked at.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that we're taking other people's perspectives in, and not just using our user experience to define it.
Gabby, is there any cost, well?
No, uh, no, we're just using Microsoft forms to send it out, and so that's something that we have, and we can easily track the results that come in. All the questions are pretty much, um, set answers, so there's very little, um, analysis that'll need to be done afterwards, except we do have a couple places where they can have open responses, if they said yes, that this was a problem area, that they could, there's an open answer response.
Alright, this was a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Item ten E, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for public hearing bid opening to be held at nine oh five on April eighth in Boardroom two oh one of Blackhawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Watford, Iowa, on the proposed Veterans Affairs furniture, Blackhawk County Pie Press Campus located fourteen oh seven in Event Avenue, Watford, Iowa.
So moved.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All the same sign, motion carries. Item ten F, motion, uh, that the personnel, uh, requisition, uh, for a maintenance mechanic position full-time replacement effective March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five be approved as recommended by Rory Gaby, uh, Facilities Director.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Ten G, motion that the personnel requisition for a property maintenance assistant position full-time replacement effective March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five be approved as recommended by Rory Gaby, uh, Facilities Director.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Ten H, resolution, uh, to fix the date of public hearing as April first, twenty twenty-five, for the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed one hun- or one million five hundred and sixty thousand general obligation capital loan notes on Blackhawk County State of Iowa, for essential county purposes, we're providing the publication of notice thereof as submitted by Michelle Weidner, Finance Director.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, this is a resolution, roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item I, resolution to fix the date of public hearing as April first, twenty twenty-five, for the authorization, uh, of a loan agreement and the issuance, uh, of not to exceed one million five hundred and sixty thousand general obligation capital loan notes of Blackhawk County State of Iowa for, uh, essential county purposes, and providing the publication of notice thereof uh, as submitted by Michelle Weidner, Finance Director.
So moved.
Second.
It's a resolution, roll call please.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Ten J, resolution to fix the date of public hearing as April first, twenty twenty-five, for the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars, uh, general obligation capital loan notes of Blackhawk County State of Iowa for general county purposes, and providing, uh, for publication of notice thereof as submitted by Michelle Weidner, Finance Director.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call please.
Brandt.
Yes.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Ten K, resolution to fix the date of public hearing as April first, twenty twenty-five, for the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollar general obligation capital loan notes of Blackhawk County State of Iowa for general county purposes, and providing for publication of notice thereof as submitted by Michelle Weidner, Finance Director.
So moved.
Second.
This is roll call please.
Leyland.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Ten L, resolution to fix the date of public hearing as April first, twenty twenty-five, for the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollar general obligation capital loan notes of Blackhawk County State of Iowa for general county purposes, and providing for publication of notice thereof as submitted by Michelle Weidner, Finance Director.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. And M, resolution to fix the date of public hearing as April first, for the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollar general obligation capital loan notes of Blackhawk County State of Iowa for general county purposes, and providing for publication of notice thereof as submitted by Michelle Weidner.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Brandt.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Resolution to fix the date of public hearing as, uh, April first, twenty twenty-five, for the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed four hundred and fif- four hundred thousand five hundred dollars general obligation capital loan notes of Blackhawk County State of Iowa for general county purposes, and providing for publication of notice thereof as submitted by Michelle Weidner.
So moved.
Second.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Want me to breathe now?
No, that was mine.
I was gonna ask you, are you gonna speak to this a little bit in our budget session of why this?
I can do that better now, whenever.
Since it's the first time. Or whenever, I didn't, like, whichever, one or the other, because I said this is so different and new to, I think, all of us for the most part.
Maybe we'll just talk about the number of hearings now, since we're in the meeting, we just approved setting the dates of hearing. So, State of Iowa law has specific requirements about what we're allowed to issue debt for, and what we're not actually, and certain things qualify for certain types, they also have implemented caps on how much you can bond for a certain type of project without going to a full vote of the public in election. So, those limits are one million five hundred and sixty thousand for general building purposes, and four hundred thousand five hundred and thirty dollars for what are called general corporate purpose, which are other projects, particularly conservation projects. So we are not allowed to have a hearing for general purposes that exceeds that four hundred thousand five hundred and thirty dollars without having a public hearing. We're also not allowed to have any one project exceed that cost of four hundred thousand five hundred and thirty dollars without going to a public election. So, we have, the bond attorneys and I have spent some time figuring out, I mean, we would have had, there's a number of projects that we're bonding for, some of them are not very, they're not even two hundred thousand dollars maybe. So we have tried to group those to actually reduce the number of hearings to the smallest number that we could have, otherwise there really didn't need any more. So that, that's why there are so many, and I know several of them sound like the same thing, but it's, it's just the dollar cap that's the same. If you look at the notices themselves, the scope of the projects is different in each one.
And you and I have talked, but I was gonna say that to, that this being very different from what we've done in previous years, and what we've used, or why we haven't done something like this.
I haven't had a chance to research very many years back, I know the bond issues that I have seen, particularly those are still outstanding. You have, most of the bonds we've issued have been for a different essential corporate purpose that actually does not have a dollar cap. So for example, when we issue bonds for the Solid Waste Commission, that has a special code section that doesn't require it be limited. So you've sold bonds for them, we sold bonds for the public safety communication system, that again has a special exception in the law that there's no cap on that, and it's an essential purpose. So you're allowed to sell more than the one point five million without going to a public hearing. Um, and now, you've also sold for roads, that's a third essential purpose without a cap, so that's another reason you would have just had one hearing probably for those particular bonds, and that's about all the ones that I have had a chance to look back and see what we've done. So it's, in recent times, we just haven't had this type of project. So this is different from what we've been doing for the last, probably, at least ten years.
Thank you, that's what I said, it wasn't, it wasn't just this year being such an exception, but it's been something that had never been done in the time I've been here, so. It's good to hear that, thank you.
Was the, the bond rate expected to be what, four percent?
That's the estimate we're using for straight, and, you know, that is all subject to what's going on in the economy, the date that we sell bonds, but hopefully we will be in that range.
And they get competitive, usually, there's.
We, yeah, we, it's kind of an interesting process, but we typically do what's called a competitive auction, and so bidders actually file bids, similar to what we do for engineering, they will file bids with, they only get like thirty minutes to file a bid, sometimes we'll see the same bidder will have a couple bids, if they see several bids out there, they'll come back and file another lower one if they really want the money. So it's, it's kind of fun to see the auctions, but we do try to be competitive and get the best rate we can for our citizens.
Fun, huh?
Yeah. Thirty minutes, that's fun.
Alright, item ten O. Um, hearing on proposed rezon ordinance number seven seven dash two ninety-one, Alpha Properties, we have a motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication, publication.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Motion to waive the first reading as, uh, notice was published on March third, twenty twenty-five, in Watford, Iowa, received by law courier in accordance with the requirements of the Code of Iowa, publication was approved on the requested, uh, the, of the request submitted by Eric Johnson on behalf of Alpha Properties LLC to rezon point seven five acres of land from A Agriculture District to C M, uh, Commercial Manufacturing District in order to be consistent with the land to the east located, um, to the south of five seven zero eight West Cedar Wobbs Road.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Motion to close the hearing, uh, as oral and written comments were received.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, were there any, um?
I don't want to speak here to it, anyway.
Alright.
This is theirs.
Yeah.
One, I'm glad Eric Johnson beat your law firm, I'm glad you answered any questions you have, I also don't want to waste your time if you feel like you understand the request. My clients own the land in the south, we rezoned that in twenty seventeen, sort of the forty acres down below, um, part of the Cedar Wobbs Road Project, IDOT, acquires land, and when they're done, they get rid of the excess land. This point seven five was, um, sold to my clients in twenty eighteen, this is just to clean up, to have all of their land and zone the same, it's a total planning and zoning, no project imminent, wish there was, but there's not. Um, and if, if, when that comes to that point, then they'll come back with a site plan, so, but this is just a cleanup item.
And it was, it's a, I think it was a six zero vote by P and Z.
Alright, there was a motion and a second, uh, to close the hearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries, resolution to. Both same side, motion carries, resolution to suspend the rules requiring the board supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Brandt?
I don't know. So, just so I understand what this even means, so, any ordinance like that, we have to, has to be proposed at or within two prior meetings? I don't understand what this is.
Um, I'll try to address that, essentially code requires that two pass ordinance. Um, you go at it one of a handful of ways. First of all, the general requirement is that there be a passage at each of three separate meetings. Ordinarily for most ordinances we pass, especially these ones, we're talking about a rezon, uh, it's not through a separate commission.
Okay.
Uh, we usually suspend those rules, and there's also a statute that authorizes suspension of that rule by majority vote, where then you can have it on either just two or just one. And so what we do is we authorize the suspension of the requirement required to, so that we consider it just one meeting.
Perfect, thank you, Mike. Yes.
Brandt? Uh, Curtin, Curtinback?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Ordinance adoption of the, uh, ordinance amending ordinance number thirty six as amended, the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February second, nineteen ninety nine, by adding subsection number two nine one to section six B, rezoning certain properties as described on the above requests submitted by Eric Johnson on behalf of Alpha Properties LLC, and to consider the same for adoption, and if adopted, would be known as ordinance number seven seven dash two ninety one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call please.
Brandt?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Curtinback?
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item ten P, uh, hearing on proposed rezon ordinance number seven seven dash two nine two, Philip Toma. Motion, yep, motion to receive and place on file?
So moved.
Second.
All right, um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Both same side, motion carries. Motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on March third, twenty twenty five in the Florida State Courier in accordance with requirements of the Code of Iowa. Publication was approved on the request submitted by Jeff Hutton on behalf of Philip Toma to rezone two acres of land from A agriculture to AR, uh, agricultural residential district in order to allow for the construction of a new single-family home located north of three six six four Oxley Road.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments were received and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
Anything?
This is Joseph Gowan with the planning staff. Um, just want to point out that, uh, the site had a land evaluation score of one hundred and a lease score of two hundred eighty seven, indicating high agricultural value. And the applicant is wanting to build a residence for his home, uh, for his son who works the farm, uh, with the landowner. And, and the planning and zoning commission did recommend denial of the request with a five to one vote. Uh, the son of the applicant is here.
Hi, I'm Wes Toma, son of Phil Toma. Here just to answer any questions you guys have.
Phil, did you have any concerns as far as what the, when we have the, uh, board adjustments, this process, the board and the staff? Any thoughts and the reason why they did that?
Why they want the rezon?
Yeah.
Oh, we're gonna build a house there just because my dad, he, he wants to live there, he doesn't want to move. I was thinking I may buy the house there, but he doesn't want to do that. And I'm there every day anyway, cause that's kind of our home base for, that's our shop, and we got about eighty hundred head of cattle there. So I'm there feeding those every morning. I also have a couple hog buildings a couple miles away, so it's kind of my home base now. Kind of why I want to build a house there, so I'm there every day. Just make it easier for me, I guess.
Wes, how far away from that do you live now?
I live in Gibberville. Oh, five minutes.
Okay.
So if my dad getting older, I just can't do it.
So the vote was five one to deny. And did they give reasons, I mean, obviously this makes a lot of sense from a justice standpoint. I'm sorry. Sure, yeah, please, please.
Yeah, so when they were voting, um, most of the reasons were, um, mostly to protect that valuable agricultural land since it was in prop last year. Um, they also discussed that, um, there are some other options, um, to go, uh, go about actually building a house on family-owned property, um, however, none of them are very convenient, and there are risks with, uh, some of the other options. Um, but the planning commission felt that the other options were good enough, and with, uh, wanting to preserve agricultural land, that they felt that the, uh, request should be denied.
What are some of the risks of the other options?
Um, so one of the other options included, um, just leasing some of the land, um, or outright purchasing it at the meeting. Um, that was brought up, but right now, um, the applicant's son isn't able to purchase enough land to be able to fill the, build a farm home on thirty five plus acres. Um, and so with just leasing the land, there are some risks involved with that, just, so.
I have, I, I respect our people work on these boards and what they're doing. I don't think this is just reason to deny this, um, this request. The family owns the property, and it is a family farm. They're looking at the next generation taking over that farm. I have a hard time saying I am gonna deny the family that opportunity to expand on that farm property. So, given all respect to our people serving this board, I, I personally have a bad time. Uh, when I read the minutes, I'm like, twice, I'm gonna have to go back through twice to read this. I have a concern that we are denying people in our county the family farm opportunities to grow. And this has not taken up a large piece of the farm properties, I understand it's a small piece.
Yeah, the rezon, uh, would just be two acres of land. Um, at that planning and zoning commission meeting, uh, my supervisor, Eric Schroeder, um, Eric Schrader, um, discussed that previously in the county, there had been an exemption for family members actively engaged in, uh, the farming operation. That was removed, uh, based just on some misuse, um, of that exemption and trying to figure out how do you define actively engaged. Um, but he did mention that when that was removed, that if, if it is a family member actively engaged, that could still be used as like a, a point of uniqueness to approve the request.
I can see that, the point is this is a case by case scenario, and that's where, in this case, I believe this should be approved.
And you do intend to stay on the property, I mean, as far as continuing on, like you said.
Yeah, I intend to purchase that whole hundred and some acres that are there right now, and, and I own cattle on the farm now, and I farm other farms in the area of Blackhawk and Buchanan County, so I plan to expand it, is the plan. That's my only job, so it's kind of the plan.
And it was there, is there any doubt, Joe, that I was gonna say that maybe they build a home and, and family member wouldn't own it? Or was there any concern that at all, or is, I'm trying to understand, I guess.
I don't think that was brought up.
Cause typically, like you said, if you're the owner and someone's building, putting something up on that property in your farm, this land, it's, and that you're gonna continue to do that as well, it's just that you're having the two acres for your home.
Yes.
Um, it's, I see it's removing two acres out of service for ag purpose, but it's really to help assist you do the, use the land and be there more available.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I, I don't know how we make a claim, we want to see family farms, and then not allow families to grow on their farms. So that, this is nonsensical to me, but.
I, and I respect our people serving these boards and commissions, but this is a case by case scenario. I, I cannot see denying that family that ability to grow a farm.
Yeah, I think we've got some, um, maybe work to do on, it would've been updating, that the, the general ordinance hasn't been updated since nineteen ninety nine. There's been a lot of changes, um, in agriculture and what's, you know, there's no shortage of land in rural town in Iowa. You know, it, they're just, and so, but the ordinance is written with that mindset that there is, and so, um, I, I've got no problem helping you stay on the family farm, you know.
And the P and Z probably felt they were going kind of by the book as far as that was what it was for, and so this is what their position was.
All right, there is a, uh, motion and a second to close the, the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side.
We're gonna need Mike to probably tell us for certain how to, how we're voting on this, cause it gets one of those tricky ones where we're.
Well, bottom line is, is that, uh, as it is written, it is written, uh, to be accepted or adopted. So, we're, we're voting for it as written, a yes vote is to allow the change. Now, because the, uh, because the board adjustment recommended denial, it will take minimum of four yes votes in order to allow the change.
We have a. I, I didn't get a chance to speak to it, but I could have said it better than Rich, so I didn't say anything at all. But I, but I'm absolutely in favor, I, I kind of have a problem in general with, you're there, you own the land, or the family owns the land, you pay property taxes on it, you kind of, in my opinion, you have a right to kind of do what, what you think needs to be done, so, anyway, I'm in favor.
We have a resolution to suspend the rules required by the board of supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Motion and a second, resolution, so a roll call please.
Brandt?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Curtinback?
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Ordinance adoption of the ordinance amending ord- ordinance number thirty six as amended, uh, the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February second, nineteen ninety nine, by adding subsection number two nine two in section six B, rezoning certain property as described on the above request submitted by Jeff Hutton on behalf of Philip Toma, and to consider the same for adoption, uh, and if adopted, would be known as ordinance number seven seven dash two nine two.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Brandt?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Curtinback?
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Good luck. Item eleven, canvas. Oh, yeah. Hold on, Josh, you gotta lead us through.
Morning, board.
Morning.
Josh Ross, now elections manager. Uh, so for this election, we had three precincts. Um, so for that reason, I just combined everything into one canvas file. I'm not sure who wants to help with that. So.
It doesn't have any sense to do two parts for three precincts. Brandt?
All right. Is there any progress in there?
Yeah, don't get, that's one of the, uh, it's gonna be that.
Um, we don't know what the numbers.
Yeah, we can't have a board in there.
I'm pretty sure that's not county business.
Something's good.
We should get.
Good, they are, they're voting like little people right now, they're thirty, hundred and thirty one, so, probably out there following me. And again, I.
Oh, you mean, yeah. I don't know why, seriously. No. How this feels, it's a mess. It's hard, I have to get it, but I just thought, I figured. But I don't know how to make it easy, I don't know.
It was all.
Same language except for A, B, C, and D.
What was that vote for?
Well, this election, um, I won't watch it for the.
It'll be nine years.
It's only Blackhawk.
To me, that's like, this is.
Motherfucker, we're innocent today.
Every time.
Yeah, very small, whole, whole, it's seventy eight people.
That's what I said. We were in a simulation, it was just like, we're dating at twenty kids, like, chill out. And then we were wondering what the number, we were out there all day, you know, conservation, and when they were going in and voting.
So anyway, uh, I, I hope, I hope.
I know, we were saying, like, you know, when he closed the door at eight o'clock, I'm like, oh my god.
I find out from Al, mine is.
Wish that was so easy. Yeah, like this. It could've been easy to book and she, we felt, we feel so left out.
I kind of made one for each, I don't know.
Yeah, I know, no, that's all right, we'll suffer.
The opposite, you want to stand on both sides, we could pull out together.
Yeah.
No, no, we'll take the group for him. I didn't have the.
Will we vote already?
I think.
I guess eventually they would have liked.
It's hard to, yeah. It's hard to say.
All right, um. That was, yes.
Twenty.
I guess twenty five.
Oh.
I guess between the two, that's, yeah.
And that's right.
Yes. Yes, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, so.
What do we get?
Did you still want to beg?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got.
Are the others since yesterday?
Yes. There's just several other.
Here, I'd like for, there's no provisional.
There's no provisional balance, all right.
To be exact, it's called.
Alright, do we have a resolution to certify the outcome of the votes cast in the special election held Tuesday, March fourth twenty twenty five in accordance with Iowa code section five zero point two four, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second on the resolution, roll call please.
Kurtenbach.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brand.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes, alright, thank you. Work session, discussion of possible board action, consideration of all aspects of the FY twenty six Blackhawk County budget. Item one.
Clint, do you wanna. Put it over. I don't know what you have to do, but. I I thought first of all, that I would uh talk through our notice that information was extracted from this to create the letter that Tim showed you a little earlier. So this is the public required legal public notice for the hearing that we will hold on April first. That is the maximum property tax levy hearing. And I say it's the maximum even though interestingly, the state did take that word out of name this hearing when they changed the law a couple of years ago.
Did they ever given reason for that? Like they made us do it and then they and yeah, had a, because I said that was what I liked, at least to make the distinction to people because there were people earlier concerned that this is what we were doing, but to make the distinction that it isn't necessarily what the taxes were.
Right, and I was surprised they did take it out because it feels like, you know, they're sending the letters because they want the public to communicate with you about what they would like to see so it it would have made sense to leave it maximum, now it's just proposed.
Yes, I thought the maximum language is confusing too, because there were, when we first passed it, there were headlines at the time, county passes maximum tax levy, which made it sound like we were taxing the maximum amount that we possibly could.
Yeah, I know, and that the worst part about that one, it didn't include all levies. So the word maximum was misleading too, because if you had certain kind of levies, those added to it later and so if you were, if I was a citizen that wasn't involved in this, I'd have been very confused about why you were telling me the maximum was, I don't know, eight dollars and then when you passed the budget, it was twelve. And it's because it's just interesting twist in the way the legislature chooses to do things.
Yeah, it'd be nice if they just removed it since it's been so confusing. Oh, that one continues to be, but yeah.
And it also has the issue with them.
Yeah.
Raising that from a hundred thousand, a hundred and ten thousand, and that commercial from three hundred to three thirty.
Yes, I. Yep. So the top section and it has the three columns showing what our dollars and our levies are for the current tax year. And then if you it's kind of unrealistic expectation, I think, but if your dollars were to stay identical for twenty six to the dollars that we taxed for in twenty five that's the purpose of that middle column to show you how the tax rate would change if you kept it the same. And then what we are actually proposing is in the far right column. And that shows the five point six three, six five oh that we've been talking about for the countywide levy and three seven, basically three seventy eight for rural, so the rural total is nine forty one. And then relating to what both Tim and Rich referred to, the next section that's in the paper shows how much the first line is an urban residential taxpayer, what their taxes are for fiscal twenty five versus what they would be in fiscal twenty six. But they increased that by more than what people's values are increasing. So it it is just going to be too high and and they did that as a reaction to what happened last year because if you remember last year, this notice showed that people were getting for the county like a fifteen percent reduction because they didn't account for the change in the rollback. So they decided they just throw in ten percent, that's not a very accurate amount either. So I I do wish they could find a different way to do that. Uh so all of these examples, both residential and commercial, the percentage change there is far too high. Our urban grade goes up for, so if you own a home, you're probably going up about four point two percent. Rural's about three point eight nine, I believe. The commercial property for urban was about two point two, I think. So it just, these aren't very real numbers. And so when I put my explanation in, you're limited on how much you can explain, but I did try to add in here that most taxpayers will see lower taxes than what appears here, because I think it's just important to explain that to the public. This notice will appear in the paper on the fifteenth, I believe. And if we are also required to post it on our website and on all of our social media pages, so it will be in a lot of places soon. If we don't make questions about that, I did provide you again the tax askings worksheet and the hypotheticals and the budget adjustments. I'm not sure there's any reason to review those unless someone has something specific they want to ask or talk about. I, what I thought we might want to do today is try to go through the capital requests and make sure that we're all on board with what the departments are requesting there.
Yeah, kind of like flashing them up there by department wise or whatever.
Yep, I thought I would do that here in minutes. Um or not. So I think. Alright, so C and P. I don't even know that we'll s- I think we'll just go through the individuals. The summary only has the total by department, so to actually remove the projects, we have to go through the individual departments. So the first one I will put up will be the auditors. And for fiscal twenty five, their only request is for a copier at sixty five hundred. What they do have a request next for fiscal twenty seven that will be larger for the voting equipment, but I think today we'll very rarely focus on um the the twenty six because those will be covered in the bond issue we're gonna sell this spring. And they were also included in the hearings that you just approved setting the dates for. So we, they, their only request is the copier. If we go to the board. Branded large fees, um this year's request is for a camera for marketing, okay, I believe that's a video camera. With accessories and I don't know if you wanna, do you wanna say that you're all, maybe we should do that with each one, let's go back to the auditor. Any objections?
They want us to approve.
Any objections? I maybe we should do that, I'll probably make it easier, so um everyone alright with the copier for others?
I think a motion to approve each one.
No, well, we can't do it all together unless there's something somebody wants to remove too. At the uh, however you'd like to do it.
Let's just, let's approve each offices and then if there is an item that we can move, we can remove it if for further discussions. We have a motion, I guess, on the auditor's office, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Both same side. That's for Garry's there.
And we have the camera for marketing.
And you said that was for video?
Video and stills, it would have the capability of doing both, yeah.
I assume that's an upgrade kind of from what we're doing now.
Um yeah, because I currently use my iPhone.
Yeah, a little bit of an upgrade.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second that.
I might be out of touch with technology, but it just seems like a lot of money for a camera. And Gabby, I know you you gave a a good explanation.
I don't have the details in front of me, but that includes some lenses, a tripod, um uh like the ability to package it all up so you keep it safe, but it's mostly the lenses and then the body of the camera that are the two biggest um cost points.
Uh let, just from the work that we do, a thousand to two thousand on lenses.
Yeah, it's not a real.
Yeah.
So I specifically got a lens that would zoom better. One of the problems with my iPhone is that to get candids, I basically have to be in somebody's lap and that's really uncomfortable. So um this way you can take candids at an event and not feel like you're intruding on on the person's enjoyment of the event and then also a separate lens for video, so there's basically two additional lenses to the camera.
This is for a digital SLR camera.
Yes, right. It's a Canon and that's a brand that Alice familiar with, that he used to, he and his wife used to do professional photography and so I'm getting my tutorials from him.
Yes. Those come with some kind of warranty, I imagine it's.
I would guess, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can certainly look it up through you.
Justin, I got a Nikon set up and I got that watching game equipment.
Really?
Yeah, it's.
Maybe she could do yours.
Yeah. Didn't get used to it.
Yeah, can we explore?
Don't need it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thanks, yeah.
Do we have a motion, uh it was a motion from Chris, do we have a second?
I'm seconded.
I did seconded. There we go, it's official. Uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same side. Motion, Garry's.
Maintenance.
They have a variety of projects on here, just a few more, they went over the one per department allowance. But so their total is the two million three forty two six hundred.
And I know my only question has been to Rory is I know how full his plate is right now and all the projects and everything he has done, was if this seemed doable and you know, realistic and not just piling more on, taking time, but you felt, I'll let you speak to that.
That's a very valid question. You know, looking down through our list, the the two that I would probably be the most concerned with would be the board office reno and the IT renovation. IT renovation, probably not quite as much, but board office reno, uh we do have a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for this budget year uh for design if the board chooses to move forward with that. Um that would definitely help this process uh to get that ball rolling. Not saying it can't be done, it's just that, looking at this list, that's probably going to be the most time consuming. Um really need the eight twenty nine Sycamore shop, uh just, you know, just to get that facility up to uh safety standards. Talking with other departments, Secretary Rhodes, even the health department, uh there's other ways we might be able to utilize that shop as well. I haven't actually talked to Caitlin about this, but uh they do have their mobile clinic coming their way. Um and this might be a a perfect uh location for them to store that inside, which uh would be a a nice advantage uh to to keep that in good shape, so.
Would that, that would be real, like just pull it in and have to pull it back out for all the vehicle?
Yeah, um the beauty of that, uh we do have uh multiple uh overhead doors and so we've uh just, again, this just kind of came to me but um I would probably just dedicate one section or one bay for that unit. And again, I I have not talked to Caitlin about this, but that's kind of what I envisioned is just dedicating a bay for them for that for that unit.
You have a question for Mike, the the turtle top vehicle, is that um for winter months, do we have a place for storing that inside or?
Yeah, it's actually over Mike on Park inside, it gets precedence.
Alright, good deal.
The the ADA counters, um fortunately, that's a project that we've just uh went through and so I feel pretty uh confident that uh that's, you know, that design's already out there, um so we're not reeventing the wheel there for that. Um elevator, that's just uh given uh given a green light, so there's really no time consumed there. Solar array, uh fairly simplistic system for the VA, uh if the board chooses to go with that. The vendors that we've worked with in the past, they've been very good to work with. Um so as far as our time uh in that project, just oversight. Um and then uh the landscaping, uh you know, I know there's been a lot of discussion about uh you know, some possible department movements, um and that landscaping, uh I put that in there because it has been a request for the last couple of years to try to come up with a an area outside of our courthouse that staff can utilize for break time or what have you. But I know with the uh with the discussions as far as the potential department relocation, uh that one could potentially hold off just to see uh you know, what it is that the the board decides to do, if they decide to uh you know, just for an example, if they decide to add on. You know, I'd hate to put a bunch of money into landscaping to just remove it uh potentially down the road.
I think we need to at least keep something in there, because I know this wasn't part of what you were originally proposing, but we really need to get some trees like around these parking lots and step up like, you know, the the already existing planters that exist and that that can be, you know done for a fraction of 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 what we're talking about right now.
And maybe the shade part two, uh not with trees, but uh with a structure type of shade uh for the picking tables out there. I know that's been uh something that I've had several employees uh reach out to me. They don't really like the trees for obvious reasons or droppings, but um.
I'm talking about trees around this whole.
Right, right.
Whole block should have trees around it, the parking lot over there should have trees.
Yeah, and we did do a proposal a couple of years back on that and working with the city and that they were, it was pretty reasonable actually uh to accomplish that. Um you know, we could break that landscaping out to include that and maybe some uh shade uh out in the existing plaza. It just just needs some direction on that.
I guess we are talking about what in 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 the maintenance capital request are we looking to modeling for? Because the the other stuff will all come back to us for we we have to actually do an RP and then and go through a process here, so I guess to me I'm a little bit more, let's make sure that we're issuing the bonds for the for projects that we wanna that we wanna do, but if we're not if we're not gonna bond for them and we're saying we might be, we might, the eight hundred thousand for the for the board office, we might get to it this year or it might be next year well, then if we're not gonna, if we're not gonna bond for that.
We aren't planning to.
That is.
Everything that's in the column marked capital is.
That is all bond?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we were to get to a point, I guess where we change our, or didn't, you know, just thought it was a delay or there's something that wasn't going as planned and we wouldn't do it how would that be handled? Would we still bond for the amount, the amount?
Which is why I would like to keep working on this, because it does, it is a process to sell the bonds so we will need to determine the amount we sell relatively soon, maybe Aprilish um to be able to sell them before the end of June, so.
So we could still change, like we could go ahead and proceed with all of these, if we put everything in as the bond as it is today, or all the bonds, whatever. And then in April, later in April, decide as you look at them and evaluate what's in and what's out and how realistic it is, then we could change that amount?
Yes, yep, but but if we would wanna do it in the next
Yeah, if you.
Few, several weeks, I'd say, I don't have that timeline nailed down yet, but so we have a few weeks in there before we have to start working.
Cause the last, I guess, and it's only to be fair to everybody, but the last thing I want to see us pushing to something and not having the time needed but also taxing for something.
Right.
That we don't need, or we can't, or for real, for life getting in the way of reasons, we can't get it done.
But that's okay.
But we have options till April, through April.
Rory, two questions.
Maybe not till the end of April, I, that's what I'm not sure of, but.
Twenty first.
Rory, two questions on the concrete for the jail, is that we digging up concrete or we may under, uh find more problems?
Uh repair, that's that's a spot repair for the most part in their main lot. Um so in their uh JCS, there is a few areas that we'll have to backfill, but we're aware of those areas. Um and then that also includes uh doing some trenching along the uh southeast portion of the jail because we do, we have experienced water seepage down into the consolidated communications area. Um so we want to explore that, look at doing, uh look at the status of the drainage tile, uh assuming that we may have an issue that we may have to correct that drainage tile, so I've kind of grouped all that together.
Okay. And then the second question has to do with the solar array for the VA. I talked to you before that went to bid about utilizing the Inflation Reduction Act, is that dollars for tax credit? Has that been abandoned?
Not that I'm aware of yet, I shouldn't say yet, I I've, no one has come to me and say, said yet that that's, that's going anywhere. But we didn't include that in this dollar amount.
Okay.
Just to protect ourselves, just in case by the time we get to this project, if it does get abandoned, then we're protected.
Alright, cause that that has the ability of payback, what sixty percent of our cost of that project. So I want, I understand why it's in there, but I don't wanna abandon the opportunity to get those tax dollars back yet too.
Sixty percent.
I'm not sure how that would work, cause as we learn more about that, I think some of those dollars don't come back for like five years. Wasn't that right, after construction? So I have figured out how, yeah, that hasn't been a long time, and then figure out how we finance that before that all happens.
So it's kind of a gift back instead of, can't go with budget for it, for the good dollars back from it.
But it sounds like you're saying maybe it comes back over in a period of years, not just like here. I I'm I'm not sure, I know nobody probably checked into it. It wouldn't be like the next year you recover them all, it sounds like here's.
Well, it did not sound like it from the presentation that we had.
It sounds like.
Yep.
I'll wait, I'll find out more.
I think that given all the other highly effective and good programs that we're seeing scrapped left, right, this is probably not gonna be the assistance much longer.
Did we get one time have the hundred thousand in for the board office reconfiguring this?
That's in the twenty twenty-five.
Okay, put it in this year.
List, because I think, in in general terms, I think it works better for financing if you design it. And then you have a better idea of what you need to fund and do that in the following year. So when, when we requested that last year, we requested a hundred thousand to do that design work so that we could go to the next step.
Yeah, okay, that's very solid, cause I was trying to remember like where was it.
Has that started?
Nope.
No.
But we do know we, you know, you know the layout of the office right now and we, it's not ideal, so.
Yeah, so back to the original question, I would say the first three items are probably the most time consuming on our end, but not unattainable. I would propose that we need to get on the, if we're gonna move forward with the board office reno, utilize the hundred thousand that's already dedicated in this budget year for some design work and and that'll give us a better understanding of what we're looking at for for a project.
What do you need from us? We rightly, we budgeted the hundred thousand for that work. What direction or what, what do you need from us to get that ball moving? Other than a twenty-five dollar.
I guess I would need to know what the ultimate goal is for the department. I mean, obviously, the obvious things are the the outside windows and trying to, I think I explained some of what my vision was. Is to open that area, that space up and utilize that natural lighting. Maybe a more accommodating lobby area, if you're all in agreement with that, I could start reaching out to professional services and getting that ball rolling at any time.
Cause there will also be space once IT moves across the hall, that there will be.
It's all contingent on that IT moving over there, yes.
I am fine with that, I mean, I.
And and the dollar amount really, the the eight hundred thousand, that came from the the pure square footage of that space. Looking at projects that we've already completed and taking that dollar amount per square footage. And coming up with either you have a light, medium, or heavy reconstruction. And we did this one as a heavy, because we assume that there'll be a lot of internal walls getting shifted around and and reconfigured. So this would be along the lines of a heavy remodel. And so that was kind of our worst case scenario.
So you sending us to the basement next?
Yep.
Only after a. I guess my, my my only hang up on it right now is, I don't like the, even though it's, it's for the other people in the office that it's more important that we change there. I think of the supervisor offices are fine, but it's, it's the other people that that need it more. But I don't kinda like the appearance of us going after a a remodel of our offices before we've kinda figured out what we're doing with potential purchases of other buildings and stuff for for folks in offices that are even less conducive to work environment than ours.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying, and I think that's kinda goes back to what's the direction, what what's the board's pleasure? Do we wanna focus our times on looking at what's already out there and what some of the concerns that have already been brought to us from other departments? And get that ball rolling and then see where where things land within the courthouse. Those are some of the conversations I think that we we need to have and some of the direction that as a maintenance department, we need to know, really, what's our priority?
I would like to see us at least get to a plan for this space.
Okay.
Knowing that that some of those concerns are being addressed. Attorney's office first, since we've had discussions of where else, so so there is, the ball is moving. Even if it's, even if there's not a ball around it, it's it's moving in the right direction to solve, to answer some of those questions. But we're sort of stuck, we've allocated dollars to study, create plan. I don't, I wanna see the thing happen, I don't know that I'm even comfortable at the eight hundred thousand this year if we're not gonna get to the to the plan until. I don't know, by the time the thing comes back, end of the calendar year, probably at the very earliest.
I I think we could probably get something lined out, sketched out before then. The the wheels were already kind of in motion when we started doing the facilities assessment back here a few years ago. You know, some of those discussions were taking place back at that time. And so that allowed at least the architects that we're currently working with, they're very familiar with the square footage, the layout. So there's some hurdles that have already been overcome, that I think will help expedite this process a little bit.
I think we kind of all felt their work session was gonna be pretty critical after budget to kind of really dig into, like you said, the relocations or whatever we do with county attorneys. Kathy and her building and what goes out there and what before, you know, she was gonna stay here, Admin was staying and it was more or less workshop. And I think that's kind of transitioning, so trying to get a real grasp on who's going where and when and what makes the most efficient use of our space and that type of thing too.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent, really just getting that work session going. And we have the hundred thousand this year, we can get that ball rolling, get some preliminary designs put into place. See if that eight hundred thousand is a a realistic number. I feel based on what we've done so far, that I think we're gonna be in that neighborhood. But we know that there are some issues in the board area that needs to be concerned regardless, so.
Chris, I hear what you're saying, but I don't see it in lieu of, I see all this, and that's kinda why I wanted to get a facilities committee meeting going soon. So nothing's being dropped, it's not in lieu, it's all kind of putting together a plan piece by piece and our address.
I also just, I wanna make sure that whatever plans we do come up, take into account that we are possibly opening up all this other space in the courthouse too. That could really change what needs to be done over there too.
It's unfortunately, it'd kind of be phased in types of things when we open space and how we utilize it, like we're doing with the VA office. That was great to get that done, move them and I'll start the renovation in Pinecrest, but it's like, yeah, kinda hard to work.
And absolutely, and then and back to the landscaping, you know, we could broaden that. With that dollar amount that I put in there, really what I was looking at was a majority of hardscaping and then some landscaping. You know, if the focus wants to be more on the landscaping end of it, you know, we could branch that out and look at some of our surrounding parking lots and and maybe go down that path a little heavier than than the hardscaping and and that way it kinda leaves us some flexibility for whatever is decided to do moving forward with the courthouse, so.
And I think there is, when we do get to the point of deciding some hardscaping for an area outside. I think we need to also consider the spot, place on Fifth Street, I think that's actually the more inviting area to be outside the original doors. Then over on on this end.
The plaza area, yep, yeah.
So it's, I just wanna see us consider a few of those options, but we definitely, we've delayed it a number of times moving on, just getting some trees in here. There's been a lot of great work done downtown, and you know, we're a part of that, but it's, we've gotta kinda keep up with it. You know, we've got residential neighbors that that stare at a parking lot of ours with no trees on it over there, and that's not fair to the folks in that neighborhood. So I, I just.
Yeah.
That needs to be done this year.
And we could certainly do that, we could redirect that focus away from more of a hardscape to a landscape and and get the downtown areas addressed anyway.
So would that number change then, from landscaping from ninety-eight down to?
More than likely, cause I, when I started researching this, the cost kind of per square footage, that's why I picked the plaza, it was a four thousand square foot section. So I was able to really kinda queue in on on a good mix between hardscaping and landscaping. So I think what I would do is just pull whatever portion of that that I had in there for hardscaping out, which would reduce that. I can't tell you right off the top of my head what that is, I'd have to go back and look at that project. But it it, absolutely, I think when we originally looked at doing trees along Seventh Street, I wanna say it was around two hundred to three hundred dollars per tree and I was having the Waterloo.
Oh, yeah.
Leisure Services actually plant them, do the work. And then we even had set up a program for them to be watered in their initial phase. Now, that's been a few years ago, so I don't know if that deal's still on the table, but we can we can look at that.
Is that with the tree, like between twelve and sixteen, three tall?
Yeah, Chris, do you remember what types of tree, there's two different types of trees that we look at.
One wasn't a good one, but one was at at kind of an invasive, non-recently good species, but it's like the, but it's, I can't really remember.
I I have a kind of a plan that I can forward to everyone to look at, what we looked at a few years ago, which identifies the species of trees. And we're gonna alternate that along the east midst of our parking lots.
I I guess what I'm hearing is that it's not, that there would still be a mix of that landscaping and, what do you call it, hardscapings?
Hardscaping is like your concrete, your brick.
So there's still be a mix of it, it's it's not that we're shifting everything to trees, we're not, we're not talking about dropping ninety-eight dollar dollar trees. A lot, so maybe that ninety-eight still makes sense, it's just that that mix is different, right? For the purposes of today's conversation, getting into, you know, specific which trees or which structures and shade types and all of that. But at least for, as a as a placeholder, if we're looking to issue these bonds, ninety-eight thousand seems like.
Yeah, and I I think we can work. Yeah, cause I read, my original plan was really, this plaza, that four thousand square foot, was making that an area, putting lighting out there. Seating that was hardened and and structure other than trees, and so it was quite involved. So if we're not gonna go to that scale, I think we can spreaden our our scope of this project, but with the ninety-eight thousand that we have in there. You know, we may even get some over at the Pinecrest facility. I had that in our five-year plan down the road, cause I didn't wanna do anything until after we were done with all the projects there. But if we find that we have a little extra, we can, we can look at that as well.
And if employees are interested in Black Rock County Gardening Club, I would happily turn that up, I would seriously, I would.
Yeah, we just, whatever we do, we just wanna make sure that it's something, we only have one property assistant for our facility. So we just wanna make sure whatever we do, it's something that we can maintain.
Do you have other thoughts on the maintenance budget, do we want to up or down, do we wanna pull items out? Anything, any motion?
I just, I just wanna ask, so initially I was of the impression that the eight hundred thousand was good, was like ARPA funds for the board and IT stuff, but that's gonna be obviously, don't you? We're we're in bond for.
We're out of ARPA, so this with, this is just on us. And that, I believe that does include some changes to the HVAC in that area, yes or no?
Uh, for the board?
Area?
Yes, yeah, that's mechanical, cause anytime you do reconstruction, moving offices, you're gonna, you're you're reconstructing, reconstructing the the roof units, the diffusers, what have you, ductwork, so yeah, it's it's pretty involved.
It was rather chilly yesterday in there.
Was it? Yeah, we're in that time of the year where it's a little tricky, when it when it gets up to seventy, almost seventy degrees, just like that. We're kinda still geared up for winter, this building doesn't flip on a dime, so.
He went outside at seventy-seven, he came back and told me so.
I guess.
We we like it when it's either, we like it when it's either always cold or always hot.
Yeah, the only things obviously just, as of now, in my mind is open to change later, but as of now, I don't like the eight hundred thousand or not hundred with, for the board IT stuff. And I'd like to pull back on the landscaping, and I wanna see the jail cabinets and the locker room stuff in person, maybe today or something.
I I can send you a, what I had, my presentation, which I had some photos in there.
Yeah, I'm looking at those, and I thought you, I thought there was a sketchup of the landscape stuff at one point, or was, maybe I was dreaming it. But, yeah, that's where I'm at with that stuff for right now.
So you wanna consider, we can consider those separate, right?
You said jail cabinets was one you're kind of thinking about, you'd like to see.
Yeah, the jail cabinets, the jail floor, locker room flooring, and, but I could pop over there today and look at that. I, when I went through the walkthrough, they showed me where the problems were, what you want to see done, so.
Yeah.
It it's needed.
The board office, I I'm just a little bit, because of the eight hundred thousand amount and not seeing for sure that we've got a lot of moving parts and much as I'd love to see that all happen, I'm just not sure I'm comfortable with that yet when we don't have a plan for it. Know there's so many other things in the building, maybe we need to reconsider, and I'm not sure it isn't like use of Kathy's office and how this all ties in. And who moves there and whatever, and we've talked about HR, you know, at one time coming up and not, so it's kind of been. The the more assistance I think we can have with some of that with plan that five years and tenure, whatever we're happy with, instead of like, oh, if you'd only done this differently. I wanna avoid, see us avoid that and it'll cost, it's just gonna cost more money.
Yep.
Or inefficiency, but so, I I, as much as I know it would be nice to get away from that cluttered area where you have somebody come in and approach the board office and, you know, be more of a meet and greet, that's when I could pull off.
Well, my concern right now is IT moving out, we can't do anything until IT stuff is done and they're moved across the hall. So are we talking here yet for that happening?
Well, the the funding would be freed up obviously until July one, but that would be one we'd wanna get going on right away.
So if we were to do anything with the board office, it'd probably be late twenty-six then before it even gets started.
Before the project for the IT was complete, getting them moved over realistically. I know right now there is, uh, talking to the various contractors out there, they are looking through work. So it's not a situation where the labor's going to be an issue, but we don't know where material's gonna end up. And I'm starting to get a little nervous on on some of these projects with not knowing. And I'm starting to get a little nervous on on some of these projects with uh not knowing uh tariffs and those types of things. How that's going to impact us. Um, you know, we saw during COVID, we saw some really long lead times on. Uh, for example, switchgear, electrical switchgear was a full year out, uh, which could really hinder. A project that needs to be done within a physical year, physical year.
Yeah, that's true. It hangs out there too.
So there's one.
There's, there's, there's some unknowns right now, I guess, for bottom line.
Yeah. In terms of timing, you know, because it's bond money, you're not really confined of this lawyer, right? Because we have the money in a pot and we've, we've also already passed some reimbursement resolutions so that people could move ahead. With projects prior to the law, so, but I know we have other, there's other things that are taking a little bit to get IT done. Because we're trying to, we're already working on their area and moving their server room and things, things like that that, um, are requiring time. But time becomes less of an issue. Once you approve the projects.
So Michelle, when we were looking at the spreadsheet, we were showing the debt services, if if we were to move that eight hundred thousand dollars and move it back till next year. For the board office renovation, would that affect, you know, when we're looking at that? Ratio, bond ratio, um, try and keep that as level as possible. Is this gonna make an hiccup in it?
I will. Yeah, it will change. It depends what we choose to do, but I would need to rework my five-year plan. Because I I worked out the plan so that once, that if we sold, if we pay that amount in twenty-six. Then keeping it pretty level for the next eight to ten years, um. I would just need to spend some time. I mean, you you could reduce it, but I think then that would likely mean. Increasing in future years. I think we wouldn't be able to stay at that level place unless we. You could also choose to leave the same this year, and that um would reduce maybe future years. It depends on if you're really gonna do the project ever or not.
I don't think it's a matter of do it or not, it's just a matter of when, timing right now. Cuz even if we budget this year and we didn't even get started until late twenty-six. That money wouldn't be getting paid out until twenty-seventh's year.
Well, like you mentioned with the bond, uh, you do have a little flexibility?
There is a little flexibility and the other, you know, I was not planning to issue bonds again in twenty-six. Except we're trying to do that every other year plan, so we wouldn't issue again till twenty-seven. However, if you choose to do that road building, then I was doing that separately in there. I do want. We we just need to relook at it. There are limits. It would be better, I'm gonna phrase it that way, be less expensive unless. You know, federal law changes that I can't, I can't tell you today, but it's better to save the other ten million in any calendar year. And then in terms of the arbitrage, it's better to stay below five in in a year. So we we need to, we really need to think about our plan. And it may be that we can't meet all those requirements and we have to do them, and that's okay. If the projects are important, then we do them. But I, I think I don't wanna answer today about.
Yeah, I see what you're talking about.
What that future looks like, because I'm gonna have to move pieces around on the chessboard.
Michelle, looking over the next three years. Let let's say we do it, we go forward with everything the way it is, with the more IT renovation, et cetera. And the gradual drawdown of the reserves, are you, would you be comfortable if we have an opportunity for capital purchase or something? Or a big perhaps remodel over at the jail for something? Um, we'd be potentially good at, uh, in good position. It's not gonna stretch the tooth in it, it's not gonna strangle.
How would you be, what would, how would you recommend funding that? Would that be bonding, you think?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I I just think.
That's what I need, again, if we wanna add other pieces in, I need to, I'd need to rework that plan to figure out how it works and, um.
But this eight hundred thousand is bonded, it is not reserved dollars, right? So it's paid from debt service levy, it's not paid out of.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, but you know, but but you have choices.
Sure.
You you can, we could reduce the debt service levy. But unless we're gonna reduce other things and I I think that means. We're gonna be increasing debt service in future, and there were a couple reasons I thought it might be better not to be. But that's, you know, that will be up to you.
I guess considering the goal of keeping, getting the debt service levy to a more level spot, um.
And helping it stay there.
I'm actually more comfortable with the fact that this can come a little bit, that this will be coming a little bit later in the year. Cuz I think that a few more of the other puzzle pieces will be in place. Um, so I'm okay moving forward as long as we think that we're gonna be able to take a holistic kind of approach to it. Um, incorporating all the different changes in the courthouse that could be happening, um, as we remodel it. Cuz I, I don't wanna remodel a space and then we find out we've got all this other space to use or something, you know, in three or four years.
And and now I look at, looking forward to the years and that spreadsheet, if we put it off a year, that that's gonna hamper our ability to stay under that ten, ten million. In twenty-seven, trying to do the the roads building, so. Right now, I'm ready to say, yeah, let's do the eight hundred this year, put it in the budget. Because if we put it off another year, that's gonna throw us in another hiccup.
I am more than happy to entertain a motion at any point.
I'm gonna move that we accept the maintenance budget at this point.
I'll second that presented.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve, um, the maintenance budget as presented. The the maintenance capital improvement plan uh for FY twenty-six as we said. All.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All same sides?
All right.
Just not show you what I'm talking about, the spreadsheet is just like, oh, Michelle was just telling us, so.
Like nine point eight million, I think in twenty-seven, that's why, cuz we had that designated in twenty-seven.
It's uh, it's counterintuitive, but in some ways it is better to do more now if we're planning, you know, larger things later. So that's what I was trying to work around. Doesn't mean we have to, um, but that was, it it's just kind of how I could make the numbers work previously. But we can, we can change it.
Well, and it is kind of a fluid plan. I mean, for that reason, I feel like I think.
Right, yeah, we haven't, you haven't, you know, approved or disapproved any of those later choices yet. It just was the best information I had to work with when I was trying to figure out how to move forward and what would, what would work. I thought the best for us this year, but yeah, we can change any of it anytime.
Well, this doesn't have to be a unanimous vote either, as it's.
No, I just want you to make a move.
No, no, it's true.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Look what I'm seeing here, so.
Next, we've got vehicle and equipment plan, um, we've got three items.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We have any questions, otherwise?
We're doing all this so we can buy equipment anyway, a lot of it, the bonding.
And this, and these would be in terms of the reserves. This is not part of the bonding program.
Oh, this one isn't?
We're living, we're living on unfeasibles.
That's right, yeah, that's right.
All right, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same side? Next up is conservation.
Hey, Michelle, everything that shows up in the capital request column, that is all bound.
Correct, yeah.
We'll make a motion to accept that.
I'll second that.
Seven.
Motion in a second, um. I I do have a reservation on administrative parking lot resurfacing. Just as we look at. As we maybe fully explore a a different space with cath- with with the engineering building, secondary roads building. Is there? It's a good chunk that may or may not.
Yeah, and the only thing we're doing in the budget this year, we are correcting some water issues around the building. That will be done this fiscal year. Um, we waited to do the the overlay, um, until we got that done. Um, cuz we've got, we've got stairs on one side that have to be readjusted after that. But we just went ahead and 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 went with that and put this in here because, because the discussions for that have just come back up again. Now, there's one way that that you could view that too. I mean, well, one thing we look at is how long will that actually be? Um, you know, before that would would take place, is that another three, four, five years, something like that? The the parking lot service is in dire straits, so let's put it that way. Um, secondly, if that was something, you know, it it does come to fruition, we move, um, it 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 only makes that property more valuable. Doing it, so, but that's your choice, so one way or the other, we can, we can, it it doesn't have to be done if if that's really. Strong to feel like where that's we're gonna go.
I do think the condition of the lot currently is a trip hazard.
Um, it's.
So.
It's in bad shape.
Addressed.
I mean, it's gonna be a while. I thought even when we talked about the building, it moves, yeah.
Yeah, even with the, to that point, yeah.
And if we were to make a move, reselling the building, I have a hard problem to working for that.
Yeah.
I know, um, on the Hickory Hills, uh, just looking through this, we're at like seven percent grant funded of. Of our total requests, that seems a little, that seems lower than normal, uh, the last couple of years anyways, but. Um, I I didn't see a ton of of grants, and maybe that's just us sort of being cautious as we work through this.
I think partly it's maybe the types of projects.
Okay.
We're working on probably are not.
When, when we're talking about granting, one of the things that, and this will help you guys a little bit too. Bridges are a classic example. We have to put them in our five-year plan, cuz you gotta know we're gonna do them. But we really can't allow to search for grants until we know we can go ahead and move them forward. And then typically what we ask for here when we're doing things like that is, we'll simply only ask for the engineering or the preliminary engineering, which we have to have. In order to go out and chase those grants, we can't do anything until we have that plan. And in the past, especially with bridges on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, um, for the most part, we've covered those with granting uh money. Um, with the exception of you guys pay for the engineering and that gets us started. So with some of these too, there there may possibly be some granting opportunities. But we can't chase those and and let Michelle know that we've got those until we know we're even going to be able to do the project. So that's why you you don't see things here, so, but, um, a lot of this is asphalting, which there there's, there's not money out there for things like that. Unless it's a private donation, that's that's really what we're going to have going for, so. But that's sort of where we sit with the granting. We we will chase, anything that we think we can chase, we will do it, so.
So and part of this, I would, I don't think I was completely aware of when we started this. In twenty twenty-seven, item three is a bridge on Cedar Valley Nature Trail, funded at five hundred thousand here. And I, if I understood three correctly, the total cost may be more.
It's, yeah, it it's.
So this is, would be our portion, and they just didn't put in the grant piece.
Got it.
If that makes sense, so I think for the things that qualify for grants, there are prices, things that just aren't drawn on here yet.
Yeah.
That works.
Yep. And typically with those, there are three major funding sources. There's, there's state rec trail, there's federal rec trail, and there's RTA tab dollars that that we chase. And again, all that stuff's up in the air too. Will they even be here? Uh, it may not, so.
All right. We've got a motion in a second. I'm listening to the drawers, you know, um, but I think we can. Forward here, um, all in favor of approving the conservation capital improvement plan for FY twenty-six, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, she carries. This is the vehicle equipment for conservation.
All right, there are the vehicles. Again, these would be proposed to be done with fund balance movement. And there are five different items on the list. I'm sure Mike would be happy to discuss any ones that you would like to discuss.
Yeah, I think I've seen, I, thank you for having me out, uh, to go look at some of this stuff, so I've seen enough to where I'm comfortable with the request, so.
How much can I rent the boob lift for?
I'm sorry, Chris.
How much can I rent the boob lift for?
You guys can work that out.
I don't think I'm gonna touch that. It's gonna stop going on another comment.
Yeah, yeah.
Fair market value.
Yeah.
And that's then, just a point, that moving lift is multi-purpose. I mean, it's 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 under yours, but there's more uses.
Yes, absolutely. I've talked, I've talked with, you know, we would think that secondary roads might have uses for it. We know that maintenance would have uses for it. And, um, uh, yeah, we can take things every day for that thing, you know, so.
I've proposed to ID rate association, we'll be all buying one together.
How's that go?
Good luck.
Yeah, it's not, our twenty-five dollar a year dues.
I know, probably not, yeah. Well, Rich and hurry back, we're gonna vote without it too, but I was gonna say, otherwise, Justin, I assume that was a motion.
Yeah, that sounded like a motion.
Sounded like a motion when you said you're.
And you're good.
Yeah, we all make a motion.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second on the uh vehicle and equipment plan for conservation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same side?
Let's see if Rich has any thoughts.
Yeah, we're done, yeah, we assigned you things.
We passed a couple.
Yeah, we did. You wanna register a vote on either?
That's why I went to the bathroom.
That's why I said I wanna remember that, yeah.
I wanted to breathe.
I thought I heard a movement from it there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Not touching that. Uh, capital improvement plan for engineering is indexed in my packet.
Yep.
It's just three and a half million, uh, in this upcoming fiscal year for the Longfellow facility. I know we've got, there's a meeting scheduled tomorrow?
Oh, yes, ten thirty to start, yeah, yeah, get the Q and A kind of answer.
But at least a placeholder here.
Go from there. Work session, the Maggie Burger meeting with the department and Michelle and getting some question answers started before we get boring.
So I didn't, that one get longer.
So to be, to be there, I don't know if Kathy actually put this amount in here. I, we had talked about it, that they believe they would have this much available in their roads funding. So I put it on here so that I could show that we were not funding the whole pro- the board was not funding the entire project through bonds. So this would be funded with cash, basically cash on hand in secondary roads.
We're hoping it's more than this, but you know, at the end of June, we'll be able to have a better idea of what, what's actually in our fund balance right now. Allison would probably tell me it's four million dollars in our fund balance right now, so. It's kind of what we're hoping we can transfer into another little, another savings account that we've talked to you about.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then at the end of FY twenty-six, we we're hoping to have some more money.
I know that you said hoping, but I have a pen and I wrote it down, it's four million.
Well, we'll see, we'll see how the weather is, you know, as you know, that's our biggest unknown for us, the weather.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And so just to refresh my mind, then we're kind of undecided on what's that building might hold or what could be there and.
Yeah, probably what degree things will change possibly, so.
Right, we have started the RFP process for a space needs study for the department. And those people, uh, those consultants have, uh, been out at Longfellow the last few weeks looking around, asking questions. I think the RFP is back, or the proposals are due. Uh, in the last week of March, and then we'll, you know, come back to you with a recommendation of. And then we'll, you know, come back to you with a recommendation of who we should hire. We have budgeted FY twenty-five money for a space needs study.
For the state, yeah.
That is with the engineering department.
Right, that's all I can remember.
So, right, so what would the proc- just theoretically, what would the process be if we wanted to look at adding another, I mean, that's a presumably a shift in that scope.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, maybe Maggie will be helping with that. Maggie and Michelle, we have some experience, I don't know, or maybe Kathy, if you've even mentioned that to them. They just came on to look at Longfellow specifically, so if it changes or alters.
Right. We, at this point, I didn't that mention that to them.
The board would have to probably ask for an addendum to that maybe?
Yeah. Yes.
Decide how we were gonna fund that.
So.
What's that?
Oh, I was gonna say, if we're gonna look at additional departments out there, do we, do we have, I guess, to go to conservation, Mike, do you have an idea, kind of an idea of what you would need in a situation like that, space-wise?
Um, speaking about, Kathy and I have chatted about that off and on. I guess I I haven't got it, I haven't put a lot of thought into it. Um, I guess I would, I would kind of need to see at least a preliminary type plan, see kind of how we would fit into all that. I I I can't envision it right now. I that's, I guess that's my my best answer. But uh, but we've had a few just general little conversations about it, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's kind of fair anyway, because I said, well, we started with this, you know, it was Kathy staying, the admin staying here and just being a shop area. So we've kind of played with a lot of scenarios and not really got serious about any of them, so. There's a lot more information that I guess we need to gather, what that means for you or you or.
Can you just refresh what the?
Put anybody else on there.
What that dollar amount of study?
Well, originally, just a shop portion with our current staffs going out there and us staying here. We told you seven and a half to eight million to eight and a half, and that was what a consultant told us based on a another county shop that had recently been constructed.
I guess we're, so what's the, what's the cost of the study, the study?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's off of our, you know.
Uh. I think we budgeted approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the space needs study. Uh, that might be over two fiscal years. Twenty-five and twenty-six. I I can check on that. I'm sorry, that I don't know that.
Around two fifty total.
I believe so.
Okay, okay.
I didn't, again, I don't play that. I wrote it in pen, but it. Uh.
Kathy, that.
You wrote it.
She's like, give it a minute. There's another accounting shop that was recently built from from a different county, I obviously.
Yes.
Would, it'd be, I don't know, it'd be neat to like go see it.
Yes, we've um toured that several times. We're going at the end of the month to s-
Okay.
We have a um, a small uh committee. You would be welcome. I can certainly let all of you know when we're going out. It's the Fayad County Shop, so it's not too far from here.
Okay.
Uh, it was finished, I wanna say, and it was built during COVID. Started bef- in twenty, early twenty twenty, I believe, and finished, I wanna say, in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
So.
That'd be great.
There's a lot of good things about that building that we like.
Yeah. Waiting on the invitation.
Okay, I'll let you know.
They probably don't have conservation on it.
No, they, no.
Yeah.
Alright, engineering, I mean. Got a motion, so.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 All same sign. Carries engineering uh vehicle and equipment plan.
Now, these are all funded from Kathy's operating budget, which we've already seen that as part of her operating budget. I just wanted to make that.
Just calling this to attention. We all need a motion, and I'm just.
I don't think so.
We're not issuing bonds or anything, just.
Is the, is the chipper that you'd be seconding out something that conservation could use? Are you still using that one really?
No, a couple of years ago, we we did purchase a new one.
I thought.
Um, and um, guys that maintenance are using it right now for that big pine tree, so, um, and it's, they're amazing. They they work really well, so.
Yeah, we're able to apply for a grant through the IRVM program since we have a fairly new or re- a newly rejuvenated program with Griffin coming on board, so we're hoping to get fifteen thousand dollars.
Oh, I see that, oh, okay.
As a grant uh from the, through the IRVM program.
Alright. Alex, yep, we need a motion there.
So the next um motor graders, we're not predicting till twenty twenty-nine?
Right, we've uh we feel like the last, we've been pretty heavy on getting motor graders the last three or four years.
Yep.
Straight. Uh, we we are purchasing them with eight thousand hours or eight-year uh more extended warranties. Uh, so we're, we're hoping that that will get us through the next two to three years, and then we'll focus on the routine replacement of our dump trucks.
It's amazing, they're almost, almost double the price.
Yes.
They were like risked during office.
Yeah, unfortunately, they are very expensive.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, you mean a motion to approve on the vehicle equipment plan? You need a second?
We got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Next.
Next, we have.
I've got IT a bit.
Well, health vehicles, the health department vehicles I have next, or was that what you were just?
No, we were, we approved engineering.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so. You not have health, you're all flipping.
Aye.
Should be, just three vehicles, maybe we missed Kathy.
I don't have health in my pack.
I don't, I'm sorry about that.
Okay. So we got the Trailblazer, we just.
So there's, health wants to continue their fleet replacement plan.
Yeah.
Because they've gone quite a few years without replacing. I'm, I am trying to get them, I'd like to be, I mean, maybe it won't have to be annual, but I wanna get them on a regular plan.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
That's my second.
We have a motion in a second for three Trailblazers uh for Black County Health.
You might, might just say vehicles to go in case they.
Or, yep. True, that's true. For vehicle uh replacement. All in favor, say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries. Next, I've got IT.
Yep. I know that Al suggested that that first item could wait a year. We could, but for the reasons that I talked about earlier, I I actually think it might be better to just do it and not, not increase the next bond issue, yeah.
Include them in this year?
A lot of what we do in IT probably should come out of operating anyway. We, but we, there are a few things on here that um could be bonded for the hundred and ten.
Which things are those you said?
Uh, they're in that middle column. Our typical the replacement computers that we're doing annually, I am keeping in his operating budget. And then some of those maintenance renewals, there's two on there for twenty-one hundred each that I think need to come out of operating. So then we have fire, new firewalls for the sheriff's office, which I think are probably pretty important. I know um Al did mention the UBI key system potentially was something that could wait if we chose. And like the last one is something that is needed for the C J's compliance that we're trying to get up to where it should be.
I think the UBI keys are are good to move forward on. I think that's a good security measure.
Is that primarily just for the sheriff's office?
We've, we've done the sheriff's office? Am I asking this to be expanding it?
Yes. I, right, you're absolutely right.
Did you wanna comment at all, please, or anything?
Uh, if I can answer any questions, the the UBI key would be for factor, so it would increase our security quite a bit. And then the firewalls and the uh logging is for C J's um uh inserts required for C J's compliance.
Do we get reimbursed or anything that we can, no, that's just.
No, no, it's just, we s- so what they're referring to, that's a federal law, basically, we, there is a local entity, I was gonna say, that the participating entities have created, you know, their own thing that it's really make sure everybody kind of stays, I think, on the same software and you think the same software, they definitely have funding for us if we put it in there, and I would just soon control it here.
The UBI key, that's a one-time?
Uh, it's, it's a one-time fee and in in the event that their loss or broken, then we have to just an additional one.
Okay.
Sheriff's Office are currently using them, and I think we've only had to replace one. That was due to a situation going to the ground, so. Uh, gonna protect them so much.
I'm more concerned about the one coming up in twenty-nine with new switches this year. It's one of fifty thousand coming up.
Yeah, there are some large ones.
Well, you got a motion on twenty twenty-six?
Yeah.
It's on board. Alright, got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All the same sign, motion carries.
Sheriff's Department.
This would be the last one. This includes their annual fleet replacement. Computers, again, a copier, bulletproof vests. I've, I did add the X onto this, although reflecting it being paid as a grant for the first several years. Then they were, they would use the commissary fund to replace some flooring and B pod and other computer equipment, so pretty pretty standard items for them.
So I, I meant to ask this under IT, um, so we can bond for a printer, but we can't bond for a laptop? Is that the?
Very intriguing.
Yes.
Um, so, equipment that is in a building that is not portable, like a laptop, it can be bonded for.
Oh, come on.
If it's mobile, no, that's what I have been advised, so they just.
So we could bond for desktops, like if we.
I, I, based on that response, I am guessing yes.
Okay.
But again, the cost of though each unit is so small, but it's probably better off in operating. Some of this, I'd probably rather have an operating if we could swing it, but yeah, fix that, so. So the only actual bonding thing on here is the copier, which they have said that is that's a connected to a building, so.
Alright. Yeah, see Nate, Sheriff's Office.
He did ask if he needed to be here, and I had told him he might wanna jump on teams, but he might, he had something going this morning that he wanted to do, so. Felt like he needed to do, I should say.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
Uh, all in favor of approving the sheriff's office capital improvement? Say aye.
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 All same sign.
So then the only other thing in a building, we need to talk about this, but I, this is a this is a very abbreviated summary of some motions that we've kind of looked at in the past. I was trying to show you on here what happens to our debt service levy based on the issues that I just used, based on what people were turned, what they had turned in. So for twenty-six, I was assuming a five million dollar bond issue, and that would include the twenty-five capital project list and twenty-six. And to do that, um, I would, and that's what's in the proposed budget right now, is to raise that debt service levy. It's changed a little bit, I think it's at point two four zero five zero, but we're in that range. Then, um, no issue in fiscal twenty-six because we will send this, sell this one at the end of twenty-five, technically. First payment's due in the following year. Then, and so we skip a year, then in twenty-seven, we would do again two years of our regular CIP at once. And that would be another five million. But I only would need to raise the levy rate maybe a penny to add that layer of five million. Because we have other debt that's paying off, so I'm, I'm trying to get to a level point with that. Then, in fiscal twenty-eight, I was just proposing the new road building. I wanted that to be, to, for purposes of discussion, I kind of wanted that to be a separate line on here. So I'm doing our regular CIP, is what I'm gonna call it, every other year. But then we're inserting the road building at six million in twenty twenty-eight. Again, I, maybe we'll take a penny increase. It will, it won't be much of a change to the debt service levy when we do that. And twenty twenty-nine, I put in the three and a half million that's reflected, that's the last year of our five-year plan right now. So it's lower, we're only at three point five. That's a ways out, I it's very possible the departments will request more by then. I don't, I just don't know. So we may we may wanna restrict that, change that, I don't know. It depends where, you know, where we're comfortable at with that debt service levy. But by bumping it up now to cover that first five million issue, you can see we're gonna roughly stay the same. And if there's growth in our property valuations, then that might tick down slightly, just, those are just all unknown things today. So, that, those are the numbers I spent some time trying to work with. So the reality is, because we do have to have a referendum for the road building. I think when you're ready to talk about that, if we won't necessarily be raising taxes to do that if we go ahead and try, if we do this now. That's, that's one reason.
I was wondering what calendar year a referendum would have to come in?
Um. You could do it November twenty-six or twenty-seven. I think you'd wanna do it in one of those two.
It just needs to be in November, uh, was legisla- legislative change that requires it to be on the November ballot, but it can be any year.
I think that's some of what tomorrow's about too, is cutting out some of that, those options, and I, and I'm, I'm not sure, but I think Maggie even mentioned something possibly that we could use besides the referendum. And I wondered, I didn't know if that was the sinking fund or or what, so I just thought we're kind of all open to whatever that discussion goes tomorrow, I guess, and start the process.
We're here at ten thirty?
Um, it's in the new conference room. I think you were gonna virtual in.
If I can, if I can.
Yeah, and supposedly, and Alan said that was no problem, right? Just thought we'd need to let him know. Um, so somebody said this.
So you learned that, that's right.
But yeah, I thought you were gonna be at the health department, you said. After department.
Okay, 'cause we make new choices.
Oh.
We'll usually post that if we're gonna have more than two.
Yeah, well, we'll find out, we'll figure it out. Cause yeah, that might be, yeah, a little late for that now. We need just two.
I'm one.
No, are we done? Yeah.
I think we're done with work sessions. Uh, any updates or information from the board?
I just, I have my first um work session with Solid Waste tomorrow afternoon, and so I plan on, I know the board wanted to have kind of more updates from land commissions on a, on a regular basis than we've been used to, so I plan on just sharing out every time we got a meeting, what.
I'm super, either that or them, didn't mean to make more work for you, but I decided they wanted to come or whatever, so yeah, that'd be helpful. No, thanks, because we had our front bureau meeting last night at six o'clock. It's a, they come in, you know, obviously, this is the first time we had a forum or had at least three individuals. It's, they come in, you know, obviously it was the first time we had a forum or had at least three individuals there, I appreciate that. It was probably about twelve individuals, I think, that were there, and then addition to us, four, five of us. So it was a good meeting.
Last week I got to attend a couple of township meetings, very interesting process. One, they didn't know that they were entitled to the stipend, so that might go up a little bit, more they knew about it.
More than we thought.
No, it's interesting, and, uh, some of the concerns with the other township and doing some follow up with what I learned there with them, so. I would like to attend one of those at some point with them.
Yeah.
Several. There's one coming up Friday afternoon or evening, uh, I think that's what they can.
Alright.
You know, right where is Lincoln?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, Lincoln. No, I won't be here for that one, but, yeah, going forward, just let me know.
Oh, but you're going to the end of the weekend.
Yeah. Yeah. They're setting the times and meetings, so it's kind of whatever, then finding out afterwards.
Right, cool. Alright, I'm sending a motion to adjourn. So.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, adjourn.